Of course, today is our virtual Joint Budget and Finance Committee meeting for March the 8th, 2021, and the meeting is hereby called to order. We have approval of our meeting minutes from our last meeting. Is there a motion to approve, or are there any changes?
I move that we approve the minutes of the February 22nd meeting.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so our meeting minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is the consideration of the consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they would like to place on the consent agenda?
Chair, I don't have my notes up. Counselor Smithman, do you have any? I don't have my notes up.
Yeah, yes, yes ma'am, I got you. I would like to put the items on consent. Item number four on page one. Item number six on page two. And items number nine and 10 on page three.
Okay. Any objections, Madam President, Pro Tem? Is there anything that you object to, or are we okay for that?
No ma'am, I'm in agreement with those, thank you.
Okay, well, me too. So, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read by Counselor Smithman.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded, and just to be sure, everyone knows I'm going to read the ones that we're placing on consent, and that is item four on page one, item six on page two, items nine and 10 on page three, and nothing on page four. So, it has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is approved, and we are on to our first item, which is item four. An ordinance to amend the general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, by transferring $170,175 from IMS Technology Maintenance Software Maintenance to non-departmental transfer to Fund 102 Capital Improvement. An ordinance to amend the capital budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, by appropriating $170,175 to IMS Kronos Implementation Project. And I just read the one that we put on consent. Well, y'all, I just got my second vaccination, and I'm gonna blame it on that.
We understand.
I'm gonna blame it on getting my second vaccination. Of course, I would be blaming it on the excitement of having gotten it and feeling like, well, I just have to wait two weeks to be safe. Okay, well, the item we're really considering is item five. A resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, ADECA, CARES Act Community Development Block Grant Prevent, Prepare, For, and Res... Wait a minute. Grant CDBG-CV Program Funding in the Amount of Up to $1,500,000 to Be Utilized on Projects That Will Prevent, Prepare, For, and Respond to the COVID-19 Pandemic and Other Infectious Diseases. Upon award of the said grant, the mayor is further instructed, authorized to enter into an agreement with ADECA in a format prescribed by the CDBG-CV Regulations. Mr. Hatcher, are you here to talk with us?
Good.
Madam Chair, we have Adrian Stitt and Corey Stallworth that can speak to this item.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Adrian Stitt with Community Development. With this, ADECA has received HUD, which they have, are going to allocate $1.5 million to the city of Birmingham if we apply for the funding. So, this resolution is getting or seeking the approval from council to allow the mayor to apply for these funds, and once we receive those funds, we'll... Actually, now, we're in the process of just accepting applications and proposals for our CARES Act funding. So, those proposals or contracts will come back to the council afterwards. This is just the resolution seeking approval to apply for these funds from the state ADECA.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the committee have any questions about this application?
Madam Chair, if I may ask, I just wanted to clarify, if it's okay, or ask for a clarification, that's okay?
Yes.
Thank you. So, you don't have any projects as of yet? This is just a formality of accepting those funds or applying for those funds? You don't have any particular projects or programs that you would be putting these monies toward, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And is there a match with this? This is just applied, and then you receive those dollars?
Yes, there's no match with this.
Okay, thank you. Those are my only questions, Madam Chair.
Okay. Counselor Smithman, are you okay?
Yeah, President Pro Tem asked my question, thank you.
Okay, good. Well, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Some of.
Becca.
Okay, it has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so, item five is approved, and we'll go to the council agenda. The next item is item seven on page two. The city's HUD Home Investment Partnership for Home Funds to Zimmerman Properties for the development of up to 244 units of affordable housing in the Ensley community in support of Zimmerman Properties' application to the Alabama Housing Finance Authority, or AHFA, for low-income housing tax credits, and if the project receives tax credits from the AHFA in the 2021 funding round, to disperse the $1,250,000 to Zimmerman Property from the city's home funds. Ms. Stitt, are you going to talk about that one also?
I think Mr. Corey Stallworth will speak on this, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Corey Stallworth, Deputy Director of Housing Programs and Community Development. And before you is a resolution authorizing a commitment of $1,250,000 for the redevelopment of Ensley High School. Zimmerman Properties is looking to demolish the existing school and redevelop up to 244 multifamily units that will serve workforce as workforce housing units, as well as affordable units for families. This project would also include a wraparound services where they will partner with Star C., which will provide a daycare facility onsite and other services, as well as there will be space for a potential grocer on-site as well. As I stated earlier, Zimmerman is looking to utilize the 4% tax credits to finance this deal. The total development cost is around about $51 million. We want to be able to support this development.
$51 million, okay. So, are there any questions from members of the committee?
Yes, ma'am chair, I have a couple of questions.
Ms. Counselor Smithman?
What is the grocery store that project team is seeking to fill the gym with? I read that they're gonna film the old gym with a grocery store.
Yeah, so they are still shopping around those concepts, but the vending space for the store will be on the Ensley High School site.
Okay. How does the AHFA funding process work?
So, basically, that is a non-competitive process where they will submit an application to the Alabama Housing Finance Authority for bonds to support this project. And so, they can submit that application whenever they are ready, which they're looking to do that in the spring of this year, and then the finance authority will do their review of the project, the financial stacks that's associated with the project, all of their financial resources, to make sure that this is a feasible project and that they would like to support it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a second, I do have one question. I was just looking up Zimmerman Properties. Mr. Stallworth, have they done any similar projects like this in the city, or would this be the first affordable housing project they're bringing to Birmingham?
This would be their first in Birmingham, but they've done this type of work all over the United States, but this would be their first in Birmingham.
Okay, and then, does that mean then they would be like the property manager of that site? Once it's up, you would go through housing and, you know, referral and everything for the properties, just like another property manager? Is that how that works?
Yeah, so they do have a property manager on their team. Zimmerman will be the developer, and they have a property manager firm that will help to manage the site, and they are also in talks with the housing authority to use project-based vouchers. And so, if that's the case, then they would pull from the housing authority's pipeline as well to help fill those units.
Glad you said that, because that was gonna be kind of my follow-up. Just wanted to be sure, when we provide these opportunities, that our residents, for the ones most need, would be given some type of priority. So, glad to hear that. That was gonna be a follow-up, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Okay, Madam Chair, that's it for me, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I believe we're ready for a motion.
I move for approval.
Becca?
Okay, we have... It has been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 So, that item passes, and we will send it on to the full council for approval. Our next item is item eight on page three. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Bethel Ensley Action Task Incorporated (BEAT) to construct and sell three affordable, single-family homes in the Enon Ridge community. The agreement would allocate $440,000 of the city's HUD Home Investment Partnership Funds for the development of up to three affordable, single-family homes. Okay, who's going to tell us about this one? I'm not gonna make a guess.
So, that would be me again.
Good.
Yes, so BEAT is looking to construct three single-family homes, affordable homes, in the Enon Ridge community. Each of those homes' purchase price will be around $130,000. BEAT would utilize their internal pipeline to sell these homes to low-to-moderate income families that are already in their pipeline within their organization. And so, we would like to utilize our home funds to support the construction of these three single-family detached homes.
Do members of the committee have any questions?
I have a question, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
This is Stallworth, and I don't know if this is something we'd be interested in, but what are the comps around that area? I see you said these three homes would be priced around $130,000. What are the comps in that area?
So, the comps in that area, they're going to be lower than the $130,000, because there hasn't been any new homes in that area in quite some time. So, don't quote me on it, but I believe we're gonna be looking around $70,000 to $80,000, somewhere in that ballpark, for a house that's existing. And so, the $130,000 is definitely in line with new construction, and is still considered affordable because of the challenges of the construction market right now. Materials are high, so even trying to construct one at $100,000 poses a lot of challenges to a lot of contractors out there. So, we are very supportive of what BEAT has been able to do, to get at a per point of $130,000.
Okay, thank you. One of the questions I wanted to ask, the affordability of this type home for the neighborhood, and just again, want to be sure that our residents can be able to afford and move into those homes. And I truly understand construction costs right now, and I know that with the pandemic, most of those, but I'm also hopeful that the way the homes are constructed, I think a lot of that is craftsman style over there, if my memory serves me correctly. So, I just didn't know what their looks are or about that. Now, do they go to the neighborhood with this as well, or is this something that just comes with our community development department?
Yeah, so we plan to meet with the neighborhood leadership, as well as... BEAT has already had discussions with, I believe, this Council of Hilliards area there. They've already been in discussions with council for that area, and we plan to have more discussions so that we can make sure that everybody is involved with the design and the look of the product. Also, to go back to your previous statement about the affordability, through our home program, we are able to help home buyers purchase the home by adding the second mortgage that we forgive if they maintain the property as affordable for 15 years or so.
Thank you. That answers that for me. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, those are my questions.
Thank you. Counselor Smithman, anything?
I'm good, no ma'am, I'm good.
Well, I do have one question, and that, if the houses are supposed to sell for $130,000, that's $390,000 for the three homes, so we're allocating $440,000. Does the other $50,000 go to BEAT for managing the project, or what is the other $50,000 for?
Yes, so those other funds will be for developer fees, as well as to assist with the marketing of these three homes.
Okay, but they don't need to market them because they're giving them to people that are already in their pipeline, so I assume that they're not gonna have a hard time finding people, since they already have people. What kind of training do they give to these folks when they buy a home? Because everybody knows that after a few years, things start to fall apart, and that sometimes people don't realize that they have to fix them. So, what kind of training goes along with the sale of one of these affordable homes to families?
Yeah, so it's my understanding that BEAT will provide families who are interested in purchasing these homes with homeownership counseling. That kind of goes beyond your regular homeownership counseling that just deals with the how to purchase a home, but also how to maintain your property, some of the, you know, everyday stuff, like making sure that you maintain the look, the lawn, and some of your internal maintenance components of the home.
And how to prevent termites. Anyway, so, yes, I just wondered, because if you've never owned a home, you know, sometimes you don't realize all that's involved as the home begins to age, that things don't just stay perfect-looking like they were when you bought it. And if you don't maintain it, it falls apart, and then the city's investment is wasted. So, it's in our best interest to make sure these folks have some good training, or at least a backup team to help them when things go wrong. So, but thank you. Do we... Do we got a motion? I don't think we've had our motion yet. Can someone please make a motion?
I move this.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that item passes, and we will send it to the full council. Our next item is item 11 on page three. It is an ordinance to amend the Birmingham Fund Budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, by appropriating $1,500,000 to non-departmental transfer to Fund 001 General Fund, and to amend the general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, by appropriating $1,500,000 to the Human Resources Department Professional Fees Medical Worker Compensation Fund, as such appropriation is necessary to cover budgetary shortfalls resulting from increased costs due to medical claims paid associated with the treatment of multiple recent serious on-the-job injuries, as well as treatment of complications from longstanding catastrophic workplace injury. Mrs. Medajic, are you here?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay, good. Would you like to make a presentation on this request?
Sure. So, prior to calendar year 2000, the city was exempt from the workers' compensation state law, but we operated under an executive order, Executive Order 32-81, which provided for medical services and injury with leave procedures for on-the-job injuries. When we were under... Operating under the executive order, we had a police officer who was shot in the head while in the line of duty. That particular officer's injuries were on the job, and we have been carrying that individual on our workers' compensation line item since 1996. Unfortunately, that police officer took a significant turn for the worse in the fall of the year 2000, and basically remained hospitalized from September until February of this year, when the officer passed away. The doctor attributed all of that medical treatment as being a direct result of his on-the-job injury that occurred back in 1996. So, for that officer alone, the medical expenses that were incurred from September through February were $1.2 million. The Human Resources Department is budgeted annually and has been since 2019, $4 million to cover all workers' comp injuries. So, all the medical expenses and all lost wages that are incurred as a result of on-the-job injuries, we've managed through a $4 million budget. For each of the last three years, we've gone over slightly in that amount, but we're able to find other savings in human resources to make up for any deficit. But in addition to this $1.2 million that we paid on behalf of this one police officer, we've had at least four other significant injuries in the last three months. In September of '20, we had another officer who incurred expenses in excess of $350,000. We had two officers that were involved in an accident. One had $350,000, one had $125,000 in medical expenses. Then, there is a fourth individual, and I incorrectly put that he was a police officer, this was actually a DPW worker, who in February sustained a significant leg fracture, which is $150,000. So, between those five claims, in the last five to six months, we've incurred $2.2 million in expenses that are considered catastrophic or significant expenses. Those are outside of what we budgeted for on an annual basis. What really hurt us was the one officer who we had the $1.2 million bill from. So, council understands, at this point in time, we now do carry excess stop-loss for our workers' compensation claims, so that if we hit more than $750,000 on any particular individual, we have insurance that comes in to help offset those costs. But this injury to this particular officer that we had the $1.2 million was at a period in time that we were self-insured and did not carry any excess coverage. So, at this point in time, we are down to about $275,000 left in our workers' compensation fund, which on average, our monthly expenses are $330,000 per month to cover just the normal injuries that we have. So, we are asking that we have made available for us up to that $1.5 million from the Birmingham Fund to use as needed to cover the ongoing medical expenses that we have when our employees are injured on the job. We have an obligation under state law to provide that medical treatment, and if we do not provide that medical treatment and do not pay the medical bills as they become due, then it is likely that some of the providers will stop treating. We are not asking for the full amount that we believe we will be short, which is $2.2 million, because we have found some ways to achieve additional savings by negotiating a better rate with our third-party administrator for the fees they charge us for administering those claims. We've had some success in negotiating better rates on our excess insurance carrier rates. We have also had our TPA negotiate some better fees on these large medical expenses, and so we believe that we will be able to make up the difference between the 1.5 and the 2.2 in excess claims that we will have. So, normally, a $4 million budget would cover us, but this year, we anticipate it's gonna be $6.6 million, and we're asking for $1.5 million of that from the Birmingham Fund.
Do members of the committee have any questions regarding this request? Well, here are none, I will...
Madam Chair, I do have a question. But I don't think it's for Ms. Jill, actually. My question is about the budget projections, and if they're good and aligned with the revenue collected and spent.
Okay, the revenue projections from last year, or for... Yeah, for last year, no, for this year?
Yes, well, yeah, for this year, yeah.
Yeah.
For this year.
Well, that, yeah, that problem, I doubt Ms. Medajic will be able to answer that.
Oh, no, no, I wouldn't. Well, it ties into us taking out of the Birmingham Fund, that's why I asked.
Yeah, well, and I have issues with taking the money from the Birmingham Fund, and if we did it, I would want it to be, you know, taken out of the budget for our next budget year to recoup that money, since the city is in the habit of taking out $5 million every year, and we've already got one commitment. We've taken money from the Birmingham Fund one other time, and it has to be paid back out of this next year's budget. So, I want to just make sure that that's something we can do, and I honestly believe that this probably needs to go to the committee of the whole, because I'm not entirely sure that it would get through a budget, I mean, a city council meeting with the entire council's lack of information on it. I guess that's the best way to say it. So, I'm really thinking it needs to go to the committee of the whole, and the council president is aware that this is, you know, going to be a hot issue. But, you know, my personal feeling is that if we take it out of the Birmingham Fund to cover this issue, that we need to pay it back out of the next year's budget. That's my personal feeling about that. I have a very protective feeling for the Birmingham Fund, knowing that that money is one-time money, and we're never gonna get anymore. So...
Yeah, definitely.
I see Chaz Mitchell, he looks like he's... Might be getting ready to say something. No, he's not ready to say something.
No question.
Okay, so, any other questions before I entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, I do want to... I'm in agreement with you that we should probably entertain a motion of taking this to committee of the whole, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Mitchell if you would think along the lines of Counselor Smithman's question, because I think that's gonna be another question that comes up during the full council meeting. Revenues of where we are now, and maybe other opportunities based on revenue generation, and where our budget looks now, before we consider this, and I'm trying to think of some other things that maybe we might even want to send to your office prior to that committee of the whole, so that...
Yeah.
...counselors are aware and have an opportunity for their questions ahead of time, if possible. So, I'm just gonna agree with you, Madam Chair. So I'm just going to agree with you, Madam Chair, as well as Ms. Smitherman, that we take it to Committee of the Whole.
Yeah, Counsel, I agree with you. It needs to go to Committee of the Whole.
Yeah, and Dr. Lee has already made contact with the administration about doing a report for budget and finance, or maybe even Committee of the Whole, since everyone will be deeply interested in it. But we need a report on our financial status right now, and the end of February has passed us by, so hopefully, all of those business license fees have come in. I'm very hopeful that lots of business license fees came in, but I don't know, and that's the reason we need a report. So I will entertain a motion at this.
I move that we send this to Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Counselor Abbott, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I think my iPad punched the mute button because I was reading off of it, and now it's gone blank on me. But you can hear me now. So we have a motion, and it has been properly seconded, to send this to Committee of the Whole. The council president is aware of it, so we are ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? It's not me. Okay, I forgot to say aye. So that item passes, and we will talk with the council president about a date, hopefully in the very near future, to discuss this and all other items for Committee of the Whole. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are to item thirteen, one of our favorites. But before we do that, is there any further comments from members of the committee?
What about item twelve, Counselor Abbott?
I'm sorry, it's covered up by my notes.
It's okay.
Okay, yeah, you're right. You're right. Item twelve is a loan credit agreement with Community Shelves LLC, doing business as Save-A-Lot, under which the city will provide a Birmingham Business Development Loan to Community Shelves in an amount not to exceed one million dollars for a term of twenty-four months at an interest rate of three percent per annum. The loan will be secured by an irrevocable letter of credit. The loan proceeds will be used for interior painting, decor, fixtures, refrigeration, along with working capital to support inventory changes and staff additions for the Save-A-Lot Food Store located at eight seventy-three Denison Avenue Southwest. A project agreement with Community Shelves LLC, under which Community Shelves will undertake a project to acquire, renovate, rebrand, and operate the Save-A-Lot Food Store located at eight seventy-three Denison Avenue Southwest. The city will provide an incentive of up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from future sales tax revenue in support. Is Ms... Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Now, is Mr. Lassiter here to explain this?
We have Mr. Arine O'Johnson from the Department of Innovation and Economic Opportunity to present the item.
Okay. But I can't wait to, I can't wait to hear this explanation.
Thank you, Chaz. Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and committee members. Arine O'Johnson, project manager, Department of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. This is a new agreement that's, Community Shelves will now purchase the Save-A-Lot and Denison and the Heritage Plaza. You may not be aware, but Save-A-Lot has gone out of business with their grocery stores, and Community Shelves have came in and purchased the Save-A-Lot to keep it open. It will maintain and sustain all the employees in the grocery store, as well as add an additional six to eight new employees. The million-dollar Birmingham Business Development Loan is, again, is for the refrigeration, for leasehold improvements on the building itself, as well as working capital. In lieu of them coming in and keeping this grocery store open, the city of Birmingham has offered a sales tax abatement up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over a ten-year period, which amounts on an average of seventy-five thousand dollars per year in sales tax abatements based on actual sales generated moving forward. Counselor Smitherman, this is in District. There's only one grocery store in District Six. This is a food desert. It was paramount that we did our best to recruit and bring in this grocery store to keep that store open in the Heritage Plaza. So it's actually two companion items. One is the Birmingham Business Development Loan in the amount of one million dollars, as well as a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar incentive agreement on sales tax, on future sales tax abatements moving forward.
Are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Actually, hey, my friend, actually, we have three grocery stores in District Six. We have the one downtown, the Publix, and we have
Oh, that is your district.
Yeah, Western. But over in that area, there's only one grocery store.
One, correct.
Okay, my question is, who is the financer for the loan?
In terms of finance? It's the
Who's financing the loan?
Their bank, their lender?
Yes, the lender.
The irrevocable line of credit is through Hancock Bank.
And what are the six new jobs that will be created? I read that in addition to retaining the fifteen jobs, there'll be six new jobs that will be created.
They haven't clarified what it is, but it'd be a mixture of management as well as just general personnel.
Okay, and what are the other two grocery stores owned by Community Shelves?
They have, they also purchased the former Western Supermarket that was in Eastlake, which was the old Western Food Market, Village Market, and they also own the market down here on Second Avenue, Organic Harvest.
And what guarantee will there be that the prices will stay the same?
There aren't any guarantees. I mean, they're going to be purchasing again from Save-A-Lot, so it's going to be along the same lines. We don't know what the price points are going to be, but they always operated like they did the Village Market, that they didn't do any wholesale changes in terms of, you know, price points. So everything should remain on point.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you for the clarity, and also thank you for saving Save-A-Lot. I know that'll mean a lot to the community, because I know my family would use that in emergencies.
Yes, if that store would have closed, it would have been a difficult time recruiting and attracting another grocery to come in. Actually, they're operating now under the form of Save-A-Lot. So as soon as this deal is done, they will change ownership and it'll happen immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, approach him. Do you have any questions?
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to follow along the lines of the clarity that Counselor Smitherman had asked for. I do want to say I'm happy to see the city want to save this store for neighborhoods like this, because the majority of are in a food desert. So I'm very excited to see that this is an opportunity to continue to provide a source for these residents. One question, I guess I just wanted to be clear. Am I, I guess, again, the affordability, would there be a price change, or would there be sort of a change in the type of products that the store offered? Do you know anything about their current business or the type of stores that they run now? Because I know this was more or less like a, I won't say wholesale, but, you know, they didn't sell a lot of name brand, or had a mix between name brand and unnamed brand items. So we feel pretty certain this is going to stay on the same level as the prior Save-A-Lot parts inventory and types of goods they offer.
That's correct. They will continue purchasing their inventory through Save-A-Lot's distribution center. So as far as their product line and everything, it should remain the same.
Okay, and you mentioned there are three other stores that are sort of coming under this type of deal. Are there other stores, Save-A-Lot stores within the city limits of Birmingham that might come under this type of agreement, or they could come back to us and ask us about, or these are all of them?
Well, there's only two Save-A-Lots. There was one in Roebuck, which is now the Price Butcher, which we did just open that in November, the week of Thanksgiving. That was opened, yeah, no, Thanksgiving week, and this is the second store. So there's only two Save-A-Lots within Birmingham proper. There are multiple Save-A-Lots in the metropolitan area, but there was only two in Birmingham.
Okay, thank you. Because I guess what I was hoping, opportunity there, even though these are current stores that we're trying to maintain in our neighborhoods, is there an opportunity to open new facilities or other facilities within the city? Is that an opportunity that might come up?
We're working on that. Yes, we're looking at other opportunities.
D seven, D seven, D seven. Message out there. Tag me, hashtag jealous, Counselor Smitherman. I am happy, though, that we're getting this for this residence. Thank you. Those are my questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to say, hey, you got a Publix.
I was about to say, that Publix is nice. Our is just so, you know.
It is.
Compared to yours.
I got you. Thank you.
Yeah, because District Three is a food desert, too, and, you know, we've got more than
Well, Counsel, we're working as well. Again, you know, one of the challenges we have is that just finding previous markets that would be accommodating to a grocery store because of the logistics in terms of getting large trailers in every day for deliveries and whatnot. So it is a challenge. It's not just the fact that they can just pop up anywhere. You have to have parking and all those items. So it's, you know, if we had the locations, then we can have, you know, items to show in inventory, but that's the challenge in terms of the logistics.
I was just
For the record, they had it wrong. I was, that was the person should have been presenting, so riffing name ended up on here somehow. It should have been me, so.
Okay, well, you know, and actually, we don't want anyone to bulldoze any of our neighborhoods so that we can have a grocery store, so, you know.
Excellent.
We're mostly residential. But anyway, I did have one thing I wanted to ask, which is, you know, the city subsidized or loaned or gave money to Save-A-Lot to occupy that location after, I think it was Food World went away. And I was trying to remember how much we spent to get Save-A-Lot there in the first place. Do you have that information?
No, ma'am, that was before my time.
Before your time? Well, I guess I've just been around a long time. Okay, that was just a question of curiosity there.
Yes, ma'am.
So let's see, we already have a motion that has been properly seconded, and if there are no more questions, we will vote. So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is unanimous, and we will send this to the full council for approval.
Well, ma'am, it's scheduled for ED Committee tomorrow, and then I think it'll go to full council for approval next Tuesday.
Okay, that's good. And so now we actually are ready for item thirteen.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So we are adjourned, and thank you very much, everyone, for being on the line and answering our questions today, and we're looking forward to that Committee of the Whole meeting where we can further discuss HR's request.